I'd like to introduce you to the candidates. We have Keith, Savile, and Patty Johnson. When you came in, we have someone back there to help you if you're not registered. If you need to change anything on your registration, like address, telephone number, and she'll answer any questions you have, so please feel free to go back to talk tour. We also have coffee in the back and cookies that you're welcome to. This program's going to be moderated by Stuart Hall and the timer is Alan Harper. They're both residents of Unit 5. When they finish, there's numbers in the back and we're going to take 10 questions from the floor. So if you have a question, get a number. Please don't speak until I come with to you with the microphone, so everyone can hear the question as well as the answers. So I'll turn this over to Stuart Hall.
Right now, as you can see, we have a missing candidate. Hopefully Eugene will show up before tomorrow. We've drawn cards because there are a total of four questions, plus introduction of candidates, about their background and qualifications, as well as a summary. The questions, the first question, we'll go through, I believe, Keith, you drew the first card?
Yes.
Yes. Well, actually, maybe you didn't have it. The first thing will be Keith will speak on his background and qualifications for the, let's see, his seat two on the council. Can you go in, Keith? By the way, it's three minutes each.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming today to this debate for the city of Pinellas Park, Council Seat Number Two. I'd also like to thank Stuart for being the moderator. You know, this is a very important decision that you'll be making, Marjalema. I believe the best way to make a good decision is to know all the facts you can. In this case, it's known who you have the confidence in to direct your city and lead your city into the future. I moved here in 1971 from Ramsey, New Jersey. Went to Dixie Holmes High School, graduated in 1974. Straight out of high school, I went to work for the city of Pinellas Park in 1974 in the water division. Tom Crangle's my boss who hired me. He's here today and I appreciate that. But when I started my career with the city in 1974, I started as a worker in the water division. I then married my wife Tammy Hearne Savile in 1977. Then we had two children. My son Keith is here, my daughter Kimberly is here. We raised our family in Pinellas Park. During that time, I was always involved in different youth organizations, football, softball, cheerleading. I was also a foster parent for many years. And, you know, my children are both teachers in the Pinellas County school system. They, they're both married and they're raising their families here in Pinellas Park. Tammy and I have been blessed with seven granddaughters. We just had our last one Friday. All girls, no boys. My family and I are members of the Pinellas Park Church of Price where I've been attending for 32 years. I've been serving as a deacon there for the last three years. I've had the opportunity to work with the city, starting as a utility technician, working my way up to my current position as Public Utilities Director slash Assistant Public Works Administrator, which I've held for 14 years. My 39 years of experience is what sets me apart from Patty. You know, through the years, I've seen the city evolve from dirt roads, minimum street lighting, one fire station, no, no high school, middle school, you know? And, you know, it used to be when you drove down the streets of Pinellas Park, you really had to be careful because the streets would flood in a light rain. So you really had to know where you were going to get around. Like I say, we really didn't have as much, but we had a lot of pastures. We had a lot of woods, you know? And let's, now let's move fast forward to today. Today, we have paved roads, good drainage, large neighborhoods. You know, when I started, Mainlands only had four of the seven units completed. So I don't know if I was there for that one, Rick. But let me tell you, we only have, now we have four fire stations, shopping areas and more. I've been involved with the changes by working with the developers, engineers, reviewing the plans and giving them feedback on how to make their projects successful. When the roads were paved and the drainage was installed, I was there. The largest project to the smallest project, I was there. When Autumn Run, Pine Brook, Gateway Center, Lowe's, Home Depot was built, I was there. That's what sets me apart from the other candidates. Thank you all very much.
Well, I'm Teywanna. Have a bunch to say, but first I want to say, welcome. Do you know who's behind us right back here? This would be Alex Singh. She's running for our congressional district. Thank you so much for coming. It's quite an honor. Do you have anything you want to say?
I said I'm interested in hearing about the issues are.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here. My name is Patty Johnson. I am presently serving as your city councilperson, Seat Number Two. And I certainly would like to continue that service. I, and say a lot of us, I'm really, really, really excited that you want to be engaged with what we're doing in the city of Pinellas Park. How it works and how we can all together make it work for all of us. That's the Mainlands and the park. That's something that's very important. I've spent most of my life working either with not-for-profits, a lot of profits, and trying to work for the unity of our city in other places. I've worked with HUD. I've written legislation. I have gone all over the country. As Mr. Savile would tag it, he's wanted to be the mayor for 20 years. Well, for the past 20 years, I've been out there working with the Chamber of Commerce, with Boys and Girls Club, with anything that the city of Pinellas Park had to offer. I did, because I was not working for the city, get to spend five years on board adjustment, five years on code enforcement. So I did have those opportunities to serve you, just recently. Presently, I am on the Pinellas Park District Medical Board of Directors. And yay, yay, nobody's ever heard about it. However, it's exciting enough that we're going to be, Pinellas Park is going to receive an award for that work as a medical board at, from the Pinellas County, didn't bring it, from Pinellas County Board of Commissioners, for the work that we've done for the future. I work with the, on the Board of PSTA, PSTA Transportation Disadvantaged Committee, which I was on for quite a few years before, not connected with the city, but connected with my work for those persons that are transportation disadvantaged. That would be with seniors and disabled persons. I am a subcommittee member of the Florida League of Cities and on the Pinellas Country Fair Board. And somebody said the other night in another debate that we were at, which, this is not a debate, it's a forum, so we have different rules. We can call names.
I would never call you Patty.
No, he just called me Patty and that's on it. I have worked very hard for this city and I will continue to do so. My daughter lives here, right Judy?
Yes, ma'am.
And my granddaughter, who's going to Pinellas Park High School, that's driving a car now. I have two businesses in Pinellas Park and I still work as a portcoined guardian. I enjoy everything that I am allowed to do. My family has always supported me in all of these things and I told you about one-tenth of them. I would be glad to answer any questions you have about my personal life or about my personal business, anytime afterwards. I would also extend to you my telephone, which I carry with me, it's a key, which I carry with me 24/7. And I've had that for 28 years. So if you have any questions, I know that Stuart has the time for them. And I'm sorry Eugene's not here to meet you. I don't know what to do.
Well, that actually gives me an opportunity to read the question to which Patty will be the first one to respond. Question one is, so again, three minutes to respond to the question, maximum. Currently, council members are elected at large instead of by geographic district. Which method would cause Mainlands residents to be better served? Charlie, let us know when you're done so that Patty can start responding. Good?
Done? Okay. I believe that for the level of service our residents receive, our city is running pretty lean right now. Oh, wait a minute, that's not the first one. Don't you hate that? Well, I'm going to tell you this, and I can't find my paper, but I have it all written down on, but at this point, I don't know. I don't know that I could actually go on, but, embarrassing, yes. Yeah, nah, I got it. Yeah, I'm sure. Stuart, is it okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. If we have a choice of having one person to serve, service, or have five, you're better off to have five. When you're trying to convince one person and that person has to go convince four others to get what you need, then you're better off having five. Does that mean you might have to explain it five different times? Yes, but you certainly do cut your service and the individuals that can help you, who always do better when you have five, buts. We've always served at large presently, and I did bring it with me if someone needs to see it. Our city charter at one time talked about this and they did vote and they did say, serving at large for the entire council in there was the best thing for the city. Now, if a bunch of you want to change that, we're all always here to listen and find out what you need and if you feel that you need something different, we'll listen to it, sit down at the table, talk about it, and work on it and see how it will work out. So at this point, it's my belief you're better served by five than one.
And that, oh, great. And that was in 1959 when the city's charter was set up. You know, I believe the Mainlands would be better served if city council members be elected at large also. But my reason is for this, is that, you know, you get one representative by district and that person is not, may not always be meeting your needs, you know? And so you've limited your options. But being under the current system that the city supports is at-large system, you have the flexibility of five members to serve you. Also, you get to vote those five members on the city council, so you got a better shot. You know, I believe that there's, there's different needs throughout different communities. Some concerns might be blighted homes, some concerns might be speeding traffic through the neighborhoods, some might be crime. You know, it's my commitment to work with all the communities to find solutions to their problems. When I'm voted in as the City of Pinellas Park Councilman Number Two, I will be retired from working and will be able to devote my time to meet the community's needs. And this is what sets me apart from my other candidates.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Question number two, to which Keith, you'll also be the first person to respond. What is the biggest challenge facing Pinellas Park today and what would you do to better meet that challenge?
Great question. You know, I believe the most important issue will always be life and safety issues. Regardless of where you live, what part of the country, it's always going to be life safety issues, I believe. You know, we need to always work on ensuring the quickest response times for both our police and fire and our emergency workers. Pinellas County's wanting to stop funding for two of our city emergency rescue units, putting them out of service from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM every night, where we're going to lose two rescue units. To me, that's unacceptable. You know, the cost savings to Pinellas County, the $175,000 per year for three years, and then they plan on freezing their funding after that. That's what they got on the votes right now. You know, you know, I don't agree with the county's cost savings idea that the risk of not being able to respond to our residents, being able to respond and give them the, the emergency service that they need. Our fire department's the lowest, lowest operating cost per run in Pinellas County at $169.41 per run. You know, to me, our Pinellas Park fire department's doing an excellent job. Their, their manpower's within ours, you know? I personally would partner with other city communities, go demonstrate to be good source of the county's funding and go back to the county and say, hey, it's time to renegotiate this. Look at how we're spending your money compared to how other departments are spending it. And I would try to renegotiate that funding back to Pinellas Park to put those two rescue units back on the road from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Patty?
Okay. Again, I'd like to direct your attention to the back on the other side of the room. Our mayor is here. Thank you, Ms. Bradbury, for being here.
You're on the group school?
Of course, I'm not going to argue with Keith about the problem. And what Keith didn't bring up is, even though we've done a wonderful job of keeping our city out of financial trouble, we lost 19 positions last year. And that wasn't something that we knew ahead of time. But with people retiring and so forth, we were able to manage that horrible hit without losing anybody. Right, Keith?
Yeah, that's past. I thought they were talking to you.
Okay, that may be past, but our future is based on our past. And that's something that we're working on every day of our lives. One of the things that we're looking at is protecting our revenue from county and state, making sure our city remains an affordable place to live, work, and retire. As a city, we've taken fiscal hits from bad economy. We're just coming out of a horrible economy. In 2007, everything went down the tubes. Everything for you guys and for us, for the city, for everyone. The contract that we lost at High Point, that's the one that cost us the, and that was this past year and is still in this past budget, was 19 people. Unlike the federal government, we actually have to balance our budget. It's never been more challenging. Contrary to what I've been hearing from my opponents, council members do not have the ability to single-handedly cut things out of the budget. All we can do is look at what staff has presented us with, ask questions, and vote as a council. Now, this is a little teeny version of the budget. The budget that I wouldn't carry in here because it's like this thick. Every one of the council members goes through. We have stickies on top of stickies. We ask questions. We want it to be right, but we all come together as a five-member council to do what's right for our city. I know that they're doing their job and I'm a taxpayer, so I don't want my taxes to go up. I don't make promises that I can't keep. On just one vote out of five, I can tell you that I will continue to fill out that budget book with post-its, continue to build relationships with state and county officials. Our money doesn't all come in from right here. Our money is a bunch of places. It comes from the county, it comes from the state, and even the feds get a few dollars in here. Keeping relationships with those people in the state and the county and the feds is really important and that's what we're doing. We're not just running around saying, hi, how are you up there in Tallahassee or Orlando? We're actually working very hard to make sure that the money keeps coming home. He's out. Okay. We have to continue to look outside of the box to bring revenue in, to be able to spend it.
Thank you. Just, first of all, the clarification, the questions, the four questions, were sent to the candidates two weeks ago, so they had the opportunity to prepare for them. And second, it's just, I'll make this observation because I think it'll make at least me more comfortable. The purpose of this is to present your thoughts on things. I don't think any of us who put this together consider this as a debate. So if you just maybe direct your answers to the questions, I think everybody'd be more comfortable.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, question three, and probably Mainlands is not unique in this. We've had negative experience with the city vis-à-vis foreclosed homes, being neglected and falling into disrepair, aided by the less-than-dynamic action from the city. How would you address this issue with the benefit of Pinellas Park residents? Patty, you're the first up.
Okay. I really know that there has been a lot of discussion about this and the Mainlands is not alone, nor is the city of Pinellas Park. This is a statewide and nationwide problem. Before 2007, sure, there were foreclosures, but there weren't one on every block. We've been faced with it as a city and we've been faced with it as a nation. The city of Pinellas Park got together in 2009 and put together some ordinances and hired Federal Property Registration Corporation. We're not alone. I can promise you that when we've gone to meet with other cities and other places, they also have hired registration corporations. When a house is foreclosed upon, which takes four error, you see a lot of destruction, a lot of high grass, a lot of things that cost us a lot of money, such as mowing and keeping vandals out and keeping green ponds clear. So this company comes in, we have an agreement that they will assist the city to physically and financially relieve it of its financial and labor burdens associated with properties that are in violation of the codes and property maintenance needs by providing electronic registration of these homes. That has worked very well for us. We're still working out all the kinks. I think there are more kinks to go. I think that with all of us sitting, the Mainlands and everyone else and the city, sitting together, we can work it out to your satisfaction. I wasn't aware that there was a problem. No one came to me specifically. I don't know that anyone else was aware that's on the council, but if there were, we can certainly get it worked out and make it work. That's what we're about, is making the Mainlands and Pinellas Park and every other part mend down and every other part of Pinellas Park all together, working as one unit towards the betterment of the entire city, not just one part. Okay.
Thank you, Patty.
And Patty's right on one thing. The problem of foreclosed homes being neglected, falling into disrepair is not only a problem here, but it's nationwide. You know, I can stand here and tell you what the city's created in 2009 in the ordinance. They, they've met in this Federal Property Registration Corporation that once the mortgage, once the mortgage company's been determined, they're sent a copy of an ordinance telling them to register with Florida Property Registry Corporation for $150, which the city gets $75 of it and the Federal Property Registration Corporation gets to keep $75. You know, and then they're, they're required to do all these things, to post a sign in the front yard, to put down all the information of who's managing the property, that person's phone number, all the contacts, and any problems, to call them. And, you know, that property manager is required by our ordinance to live within a 20-mile radius of the property. I wish he lived next door to the property, because he'd probably have done that, okay? But our Code of Enforcement Division has recently been given some other authorities, you know, on securing pools and things like that, you know? And they have a contractor that they can hire, come in and turn the property around, get it cut and cleaned up, which is really good. You know, it takes a long time. I think, I think Tallahassee is, is really tied to the city's hands, you know? But I think it's time to get with these other communities and say, what can we do? These houses were doing to disrepair further and further. They're becoming drug houses. People are going in there and stripping. I went to one house and they stripped the whole pool enclosure out, described it for aluminum, you know? But this company that we're talking about, this property manager, is required to come in, clean up the property and make it look like it is not a vacant home. Yeah, it's kind of difficult to make a vacant home not look vacant, you know? But, you know, the kids in the neighborhood, they know what's going on. You know, everybody around knows what homes are, are vacant, which homes aren't. You know, what would I do? You know, I'd ask to meet with the fellow council members, the city manager, city attorney, and come up with, come up with ideas, you know, brainstorming with other municipalities, say, hey, how are we going to get these lawmakers to change it so that our hands aren't tied? So we can clean these properties up right away. There is no sense for me to live next door to a house that's overgrown, rats are coming out, trees are growing out of the, it doesn't make sense to me. You know, but I look at obstacles, I look at obstacles as being opportunities to be successful, and I think we can be. You know, not only do we have this problem with foreclosures, you know, sometimes it's, sometimes it's our neighbors in these homes, letting them become overgrown and in need of repair for whatever reason. Maybe they lost their spouse, maybe they lost their job, you know? Maybe they're having health reasons, their, their single parents got divorced and they just don't know how to correct the problem, the problem's gotten so big. So I think city staff needs to, you know, to be able to separate those people and, and see the needs of our community. I just believe that, you know, our community, our community policing division, you know, they need to be able to put those people, those homeowners in context with organizations like People Helping People and other local organizations. That's a fine, very good point.
For those of you outside of the Mainlands, obviously, some of these questions may sound more than moderately provincial, but we're in the Mainlands. Last question, and again, this will go on longer because it's more of an issue here. So you have 10 minutes to elaborate if you need it.
I need one.
How would you characterize the city of Pinellas Park's treatment, treatment of Mainlands over the last five to 10 years? What benefits have been derived? What's your plan to increase the benefits received by Mainlands residents? And how would you plan to overcome the perceived negative inertia of City Hall?
Briget, I'd expect the city's treatment of Mainlands, Mainlands, along with all the other associations, to be excellent customer service. However, I can only assure you that, starting back in 2006, I started developing relationships with both Masters Association and individual units. I've always received positive feedback commending both myself and my staff for being professional and helpful. This relationship started over approaching Mainlands about allowing the city to come over and take over the maintenance of their fire hydrants, which is a program that I started Citywide. You know, the benefits just to that program alone, they no longer had the paying annual fee to accompany them to test the hydrants and repair them, let alone replace them. This service has been a win-win situation, both for Mainlands and for the city. You know, the Mainlands get fire hydrants that are working properly and our firefighters are assured when they connect to a hydrant, it will work. Look around, if you see any hydrants newer than 1987, they were put in by the city of Pinellas Park. You know, and then, and annual cost to, to maintain $175, to replace $100 is about $7,500, $4,500. Our relationship continued with the expansion of reefering water being brought into the neighborhoods, with the city allowing us to create utilities. with the city allowing us to create utilities in order to make the connections for the city and more cost-effective for the Mainlands' individual units. This, however, was much more difficult than replacing fire hydrants. This was a major commitment, both by the city and the entire Mainlands community. We had struggles along the way, providing too much water pressure and clogging up too many sprinkler heads to count. But after the water settled, it was a great accomplishment. Benefits, benefits of Mainlands from that is, you know, they didn't have to maintain their wells anymore. They didn't have to maintain their pumps. They didn't have the electrical costs, the repair costs to the pumps. And when they hooked up to the reclaim water, I made a permit application to Swift Mud, getting them to be in compliance with the watering restrictions. Because if not, Mainlands would have, you know, you can only do odd and even, and everybody's mixed together out here, so it wasn't worth it. They'd have never got a permit, but we worked with the state and got that work down for them. Then about three years ago, well, let me go back. And another great benefit from going to reclaim water from the well waters, you know, we're preserving our number one most natural resource that we have. You know, you see it, water shortages all over, and we're protecting our most natural resource. But the biggest, the biggest accomplishment was three years ago. We offered you a great deal. I really believe all the individual units didn't sign up at first because they were thinking, "Oh, there has to be some strings attached to this one." But as they saw the end results with those strings attached, everyone in the unit signed up, making the project a success. The agreement was to allow the city of Pinellas Park sort of vision to come into the unit to clean their sanitary sewer system. And in allowing us to do that, we gave them both a written copy and electronic copy. And this is an evaluation or inspection report on their sanitary sewer collection system. This was by far the most labor and equipment intense undertaken yet. This work's performed in part of the city's inflow and infiltration system. You know, we do this every day citywide. This is performed by viewing and recording the inside of each sewer in Mainlands on a closed-circuit television system. Benefits of the project to reduce the city's sewer treatment costs, because all that rainwater that goes into the sewer system costs each and every one of the residents money. This work showed, showed the videos, and it showed each problem in the sanitary sewer system, and it's coded on the severity of the problem from one to five. One being the most severe and five being the weakest. This allowed the association to come up with a business plan on how to maintain their utility. Overall, their system is in very good shape for the age of it, highlighting, you know, certain locations needing attention sooner than later. Estimated value on that savings to Mainlands is probably in excess of $200,000. Mainlands cost, they had to replace like 20 manhole covers, ringing covers, because we couldn't get into them. But it was better to find out that we couldn't get into them during the day, rather than when they had an emergency out here. It would have made it a lot more difficult to get into, cost more, and it would have caused some sewer overflows. I know the city still has a lot to offer Mainlands communities by supplying you with the proper engineering standards that you may want to use in maintaining and operating your underground utilities, sidewalks, streets, drainage pipes. Even offering you the possibility of piggybacking off some of the city contracts to save you money, because we generally get a much better price than you will. You know, when I'm elected, I will ask Doug Lewis, city manager, to reach out to this community, set up means with you and our staff to look at ways we could better serve you. It's truly been a pleasure working beside all of you and making projects successful. In closing, I would like to assure all the residents of Pinellas Park that are here with all these savings you hear going on, we provide these services to you every day out in the city. It's kind of unique out here. They pay the same taxes, they pay the same water rates. You get this service on a daily basis. We come out here and provide this service to save all the residents of the city of Pinellas Park money. Thank you.
Patty, you want to be...
Thank you. I've spent a lot of time out here. I'm sorry, Stuart. I've spent a lot of time, I'm at the back this far, out here in the Mainlands for the last five years, going to breakfast, going to activities, meeting all of you that come out, that I could. A bunch of people here. And I have no idea, or I did not have any idea, that there was a perceived negative inertia at City Hall. It's new to me. I really beg for you to go, even if I don't win this election, to go to each council member and say, "Look, we need this or we need that." Because that's why your council members are there, is to serve each and every one of you. That's what I would like to do. I can't tell you that I worked on a specific project. I can tell you that I've worked on every project. I can tell you that our mayor and city council work every day on different issues. We don't have just one issue. We have a lot of issues. We have issues that some have more experience in than others, but we always have our staff, which I'm really, really proud of, our staff and everyone that works for Pinellas Park, and those who used to work for Pinellas Park too. I was out here with the majority of the council and the city staff last year. Our mayor asked for a City Hall meeting. And I think we were in Unit Four, weren't we, Sandy? And we asked for the Mainlands, the people that live at Mainlands, to please come and tell us just exactly what your problems were, what you do like and what you don't like. Stuart actually told us that he had a problem with traffic. He got to talk to the chief. Stuart is not yet convinced that that problem has been taken care of. So we are actually really working on it, Stuart, and we'll be inviting you to sit down with the answers we've come up with. I'm aware of the challenges Mainlands is facing relative to their infrastructure and maintenance issues. However, I cannot single-handedly address these issues. That's not how the council works. What I can do is learn about the issues you face, take them back to City Hall, and advocate on your behalf. At breakfast, it was brought up that there was a problem getting to Greenlight Park. We put a guard rail along 102nd Avenue. There was a problem brought up about the sewers. The city TV'd those lines. I mean, that was a city plan from start to stop. The sidewalk was put in down 102nd Avenue. If you don't live here, you probably aren't real familiar with it. But we have 102nd Avenue entrance and exit too. That all resulted from somebody saying, "We have a problem." I hope to see that we have continued communication. If you want to talk about ways to improve city services, let's do it. That's what we're here for. That's what the budget is made for. Those things can be changed and fixed. We're working hard to make it better. Let's bring in staff to assess the situation and give you all some good information on what it's going to take to move forward from here. That's what we're all here for, and that's what we're all about.
Thank you, Patty. Do you want to choose a break before you summarize either one of you? Are you okay to roll? Do you?
No, it's your turn.
Actually, it is your turn first.
My turn first?
This is, to clarify, the final one is the candidates wrap up. So we'll give you like up to 10 minutes, Patty, if that's okay?
Yeah, we're at a time.
I noticed that. If we had one candidate, we would have done a half hour.
Yes, he has quite a few times. In the name of NASCAR, who is running right now, with a lot of people not watching, I just want to tell you, and it's not going to take me the whole long time, that I've been here, I will be here, even if I don't win, I'm not going away. I will go back to the chamber, continue to go to legislative meetings in Tallahassee. I will continue to support this city and the Mainlands, because the Mainlands is part of this city. So is Golden Gate and Sunset and Roberts and Vendo Village. There are a lot of people that I haven't met. I look forward to meeting a lot more. I look forward to finding out what your needs are and getting to work on them. If I didn't have such a wonderful family that supports me in all of this, I couldn't do it. But I do get to. So I would appreciate your support. I have loved, I only got two years out of the four years of service because Sandy became mayor when our prior mayor, Michelle, quit. And that left two years from her seat vacant. So I only got two years. I would really like to have one full term. And I promise you, you won't be sorry that you voted for me. I will make you happy. I will be available, whatever you need, one way or another. Go for it, Keith.
I can't say that much, but I would like to thank y'all for coming here today. I hope this, this venue we have today was informative to y'all. You know, I'm just looking to gain your confidence and so that you vote for me on March 11th to lead this city into the future.
They can't hear you.
You know? Yeah, it's always been a joke around Pinellas Park that I wanted to become the mayor, but you know what? It's not a joke. I've always wanted to be part of this city council. Rick Muller's known that for years. Right, Rick?
Sure.
Everybody's known it. And that's always been my goal, to become, you know, person, person council person, and be a mentor by the people on the, on the council.
Can you still hear?
Y'all still here. Take my advice, right? But anyway, I don't have a lot to say. Alls I want to say is, thank y'all for coming, and I appreciate your support on March 11th. And give me the opportunity to change the attitude. I mean, I didn't know anything like that was even going on. Because I know my boss always tells me, "The only thing we have to offer all the residents in Pinellas Park is customer service." And you know what? I pride myself on customer service. I always have. I cannot believe that, especially a community this size, this size, does not have an outstanding rapport with our city leaders. I mean, but I'll tell you what, I'm going to do something these people don't do. I'm going to take that office up there that Patty sits at. I'm going to make that my office on me. I'm going to set up a schedule when I'm going to be there so people can come and see me. I'm going to, you know, I'm going to be flexible. I'm going to come out here and see your needs when there's a problem. You know, when there was a problem back, what was it, February 5th of '06? They had that big rainstorm, what happened? Mainlands started flooding. And why was that? That was because Swift Mud didn't open the gates over there, saw Grass Park Lake. But one, because they didn't anticipate us getting that much rain. Well, now they're on a totally different system. They can be sitting up there in Swift Mud and see the storm, see the levels rising in that lake. And they can go ahead and push that button, and it'll open the gates, and the waters in that lake will flow out to Tampa Bay. So that the water, the water around this part of town goes straight out there. And, you know, there's no need for those type of things happening in today's society. You know, flooding of the streets when it could have been easily monitored, but Swift Mud wasn't doing their job. But, you know, I'm just beside myself with the relationship I come to understand that Mainlands has with the city of Pinellas Park, because that's not what I've always seen the city promote. I can't apologize for that, because I won't. But I can assure you, the customer service I'll give you, you'll never be complaining about that again. Thank you.
Okay, we're now on questions from the audience. Who is number one?
My question is first. Mrs. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, you have represented yourself as an advocate of the elderly. How did that advocacy help Willie Percher? As you're aware, ABC Action News did several reports. Were you heading drug and locked away, unable to get regular visits from friends or go to church? Is that your definition of advocacy?
Let me assure you, sir, that those reports were not accurate in any way, shape, and form. The court monitor has been a part of that for the entire time the situation went on. And I always have been and will continue to be an advocate for the elderly. Thank you for your question.
Let me maybe clarify, at least for Unit Five's purposes. If anybody has an axe to grind, take it outside later on. So we really don't need that thing here. Question number two.
My name's Tom Rask. I live in Seminole. I drove all the way from the other end of Park Boulevard to ask a question. So I want to follow up on something Patty Johnson wrote to me in email on February 5th. She wrote that when sitting on the PSTA Board of Directors, she voted to pro ballot language, not to endorse the Greenlight Pinellas Plan. The Greenlight Pinellas Plan is the largest proposed infrastructure investment in Pinellas County history. And before I ask my question, I want to ask if Ms. Johnson obviously acknowledged it emphatic. You did vote to endorse the Greenlight Pinellas Plan on the PSTA Board on August 28th, 2013.
I think you know the answer to that, because I did answer you and say that I made a mistake.
I did not get that email.
Mr. Rask, I truly and sincerely sorry that you didn't get it. I did make a mistake. I did soundly vote for and endorse the PSTA Greenlight Program.
Okay. Can you then explain your, this is my question. You wrote in your first email to me, "I do not support charging taxpayers for something in advance that they may or may not be feasible in the future." You are supporting charging the taxpayers in advance. Can you elaborate on that? I happen to think it's a lousy plan. You're for it. You are charging in advance. I can't take your statements to have.
Mr. Rask, I know that you are very concerned about the Greenlight Program. And all that I was trying to say is, I am deeply, deeply concerned that we provide transportation to the elderly, to the disabled, and those people that are not working. Because in few years, when our county is considerably more built up than it is today, we have to have that transportation. And I understand your feelings. I am not, I don't know how to say this exactly. I'm not as excited about light rail as I am in bus transit. And I am so glad that the voters are going to have the opportunity, just as I am, to say what we do want or don't want. Will that help, Mr. Rask?
I don't know if I followed up or not.
Thank you, Patty. Question three.
Good afternoon. My question pertains to transportation concern that I have at US 19 and Mainlands. And I have asked a few times why, if you're traveling...
Put it back. You're doing the same thing as us.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just asking why, if you're traveling north and south on US 19, why we don't have access to a countdown clock? So that, I think it's a, I perceive that to be a safety issue. I did talk to a few people at the city, and they said the only time that those countdown clocks can, will be activated is if somebody pushes... clocks can, will be activated is if somebody pushes a button across 19. But I just don't understand why we just don't have that anyway. I frequent Walgreens, is on the corner of 49th and 78th, and there's a countdown clock on 49th Street. So I just don't understand on a busy thoroughfare like US-19, why we don't have countdown clocks right here in front of us here. That's for both of you.
I've been writing the whole time you've been talking. Because I tell you what, I don't have an answer, but I'm willing to find out. And if you'll give me your name and number before I leave here, I will make the necessary call. I agree with you. We should have a countdown clock out there. You see them throughout the community. You'll see them on 86th Avenue, 49th Street. You'll see them in 66th Street, Park Boulevard. You know, we need that. And don't throw anything at me, but especially in a, in a community that's surrounded by nursing home up the street, a bus stops out front, you know, this would, this would make it safer for the, for the, for people using the crosswalks to cross. And yeah, that's a great point. I'm good. I've been writing as you were talking. I'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have them. They're just not working.
That's correct. I was going to tell you. Go ahead, Nancy.
We have crosswalks, the equipment there to do that, but they're not working.
If they're not working, they're not there now.
Okay. I, I agree. I do think that you need to understand one thing, that we talked about this before. US-19 is a state highway, and we have an entrance to it from a city street. I believe that that's still city, or is it Mainlands? Huh?
A city.
Part of its Mainlands, part of its city. And the big street, the cross street, is the feds. So it takes all three of them getting together. And I happen to know with that particular set of lights, that they put them in, the feds came in and turned them off, then the Department of Transportation said we will, and then they said that we won't. So it's a process. It's being worked on. I promise, it's already being worked on.
How long we been working on that problem?
It's been changed about four times now. Things aren't like in the city that you can address it today.
Question number four.
First off, I would like to personally apologize to Patty Johnson. I don't know why someone came here to billify her. It's certainly not appropriate in this kind of forum. Now to get to my point.
Thank you.
I have always, working from Unit 7, both as a Board of Directors member and now as on various committees, I've had excellent service from the city of Pinellas Park, from the people who are now sitting on the board. I can call any one of them and get any kind of help that I need. And Mr. Seville, I do have to compliment you. When we were connected to reclaim water at Unit 7, it was done in a very quick and well-mannered timeframe. And so we're thankful for that. I'm not sure what's going on in the rest of the six units of Mainlands. I really don't understand why they are complaining about inertia or anything else on city council. Because as I said, Unit 7 has gotten excellent results, no matter who I call, whether it be on city council or anybody in any of the departments.
I don't think I need a microphone.
Well, yes, you do. Well, absolutely.
I've always been a loudmouth for a while.
I know. That's fine. He doesn't remember. We're all men.
Oh, okay. First of all, I'm not here to billify anybody. First of all, I'm here only to try to get an understanding about someone's decision-making process, what makes someone decide to go one way or the other. And my question is directed to Patricia Johnson because of what's been brought out in the news. And it is regard to Willie Percher.
We don't want to hear it.
And the question is, what was your role in taking Willie Percher out of his home? Well, what, if you're in the city council, you're always making decisions. I'm curious on what, what your decision process is, or does it stop?
Charlie.
That's my question.
Please take the microphone.
That's my question.
And your name is?
My name is Roy. And my question is, what made you do that?
Well, as I explained to the news, he had a medical issue. Okay? But I'm not going to go into that medical issue or what happened thereafter. But it was in his best interest, and the court monitor agreed with that. So I have never done anything without the court 100% being there and knowing what was
You really don't need to respond to those kinds of questions at the end. Do we have a question six?
Yes.
It's nine and six, Joan of Art.
I'm here. Judy Samanello. I live in Unit 5. I moved to St. Pete in 1978, and at that time, Pinellas Park was noted for rednecks and trucks up on blocks. Now, in 2012, three to four years later, I moved to Pinellas Park in Mainlands. And I called the city because I was very concerned about the Gateway Center Boulevard entrance, the eyesore that is there. The, first of all, the streetlights didn't work. You know, I don't, I do travel at night. I do come up US-19 after dark and turn into that Gateway Boulevard. The lighting is terrible. So I did contact the city of Pinellas, Pinellas Park, and they said I had to notify the state about the streetlight. Well, I did that. When I asked them about the condition of that structure, they said, oh, well, the owners of Gateway are going to fix that. Well, that was in the summer of 2012. Well, I just called Pinellas Park again, and I spoke with a community compliance specialist. And she told me that what is an eyesore for one person may not be an eyesore for somebody else. And when I think it's a maintenance issue, I don't care if it's privately owned or not. It's in Pinellas Park, and I think somebody should address it. Besides that, it is a safety issue at night. They have floodlights. They have not worked since I've lived in Mainlands. So I think it's a safety issue, and somebody needs to be looking after it. And I think the city of Pinellas Park, since they're not doing it, I hopefully, by speaking to one of you, whoever is the winner of this election, will go to the city manager, and somebody will address this because it is a safety issue.
You don't have to wait for whoever wins this. You have four of five council members. And I can promise you that in, within 20 hours, somebody will be taking that issue up, and there will be a bunch of people out there looking at it. You don't have to wait. It's done.
Well, no, but I got speed dial on my phone, and I'm going to call BARD, the Public Works Ministerial, when I leave here. He just came here from Pinellas County Highway. I can assure you, he's the man that will make something happen. And I will let him know that today. I'm sure he'll contact him. And give me your number before you leave, and I will call you back tomorrow with an update on what they're new.
Do we have the last number, Stu? I think number seven.
Where's that? Come say hello. One thing I want to know is, US-19, is that a federal highway or state highway?
That's a federal. It's federal and state, I believe. It's federally funded.
Yeah. The road, what they're doing up on 19 isn't done by the feds.
It's federal, state, and county. Our money doesn't come out of one pot. We budget so much for streets. We budget so much for drainage. We budget for all those different things. But what are you specifically looking at?
You just said that US-19, you had to go to the feds to get the stoplight work.
No.
Going across. And it's, you gotta go to state first, right?
We have already been talking with the state and county, and we will continue until that is properly fixed. The equipment is already there.
I understand that, but you said you had to talk to the feds about it.
Okay, yes. Department of Transit, Department of Transportation.
Right. For the state of Florida, not the federal government.
That's correct. But that is the Department of Transportation is federally funded. Yes, yes, the state. Whatever it does, we have it under control. We don't, it will work.
The next thing I want to ask you is about the water situation. You say there's a water shortage, and we're putting up big condos and apartment buildings all over, and you were all approving, and then you come back to us, people with a minimum. You don't have any bank if we don't use that amount of water. And yet you flush thousands of gallons of water up the end on 62nd Avenue. What are we doing with that water we're wasting?
I'll be glad to answer that for you, sir. Because I've been working for the city of Pinellas Park Water Department for 39 years, and we waste a lot of water in this community. Only, the only reason why we waste it. You know, years ago, we went, we used to disinfect our water with chlorine, but they found out that chlorine causes cancer like bacon. So they went to chloramines. Chloramines is not as good as disinfectant. Doesn't last as long in the water. So we've got, Gateway Center is a perfect example. Because the mayor called me one night, and he says, "There's water all over the road." And I said, "It's out there every night, Bill. We flush at night out there so the residents don't see us waste the water." But it's not really a waste bill. Because what happens is we built this big project out there, and the infrastructure is so huge. We got these 12-inch water mains to provide fire protection out there for these massive buildings they're going to build in the future. Well, we have no use out there, so the water gets stagnant. While we can't have the businesses that are out there drinking stagnant water, so we have to flush the water and get rid of it. Now, that new complex you're talking about, Gateway Center Apartments, 432 units. And that's actually going to help us out there because we redirect the water. The more usage we get, the water turns over, it doesn't get stagnant. But just a few numbers. We were supposed to be using 6.2 million gallons of water a day right now. But through the efforts of all the residents in Pinellas Park, what do you, what do you think we use a day now?
I think five.
4.3 million gallons a day.
Yeah, but I'm still getting charged.
You're, you're only getting charged what you use, but...
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
Oh, did I make a mistake? I'm sorry. Where are you at?
I live in Pinellas Park, but I get charged a minimum.
Yes, you did. You do.
Right. If I don't use that water, then it's buffalo.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right.
And if a pipe breaks, and then I get charged extra.
You're absolutely right.
I have no bank to go on.
You're absolutely right. You do get charged a minimum fee. I think it's 3,000 gallons.
Right.
Correct? And that's to support the infrastructure of the, of the city. And then when you do get a water break on your property and it does leak, yes, you are charged. But if that, if that water doesn't go through the sewer, make sure you call the city, and they'll give you a credit or rebate on what they go through.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I?
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Say one more thing.
I just want the city, I just want you people to know that the city of Pinellas Park is working really, really hard, and what you have to look forward to, Keith just said, the epic at Gateway Center, 432 apartment homes, the Village of Park Place by Beazer, that's 108 town, townhouses, that's over by the mall. Buffalo Wing Restaurant, Aspen Dental, right in front of Home Depot, with an additional 3,900 square feet of office space. IHOP Restaurant, and an additional 7,000 square foot office. O'Reilly Auto Parts, hidden, preserved by Gulfwind Homes. That is six custom homes with the potential of 10 plus homes, and those are $350,000 and up. We put in a park behind Cheddar's, and we have a bus station at the mall. And if y'all don't know about the bus station, we have the fourth largest bus transportation system at our mall. And they didn't have a place to go to the bathroom, and they didn't have a place to buy tickets, and they didn't have a place to transfer. We're growing. We're growing real big. And we have a lot of things to deal with, and we want all of us to grow and be comfortable in what we're doing. So we need each one of you to give your input to us on what will make it better for you. That's very important.
We don't need light rail.
That's what I... Well, thank you very much for coming. You're welcome. Thank you. 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 Thank you.